Welcome to the April Strategic Planning Committee meeting today. As you know, that we are continuing to work in a virtual environment, so we are asking for your patience at this time. Please understand that there may be delays as we transition between speakers, presentations, and participants. And if any participants have issues with technology, please send a message to the moderator. Okay, so today I am excited, very excited for this topic. We have with us Erica Brown from the Triangle J Council of Government. And she will be discussing impacts of market rate housing in our current neighborhoods. But before, I just want to do one more check because as is customary, we normally open the door, open the floor for any, any speakers or any guests that want to make any public comments at this time. Do we have anyone? Just want to do a final check?
Nope, no one.
Okay, well, thank you very much. So I will now release the floor to Ms. Erica Brown. Thank you so much for coming today. I look forward to your presentation.
Thank you so much, Commissioner Winter. So I'm gonna go ahead and try and share my screen again. Let me know if y'all can see it. Looks like it's good?
Yes.
Give me one second. Just like I said before, we started, I'm still getting used to WebEx, but I think we can probably go ahead and get started. So I am not accustomed to how you normally do things, but if you would like to stop me in the middle of the presentation, please feel free, just for clarifying questions. I'm also obviously happy to open it up for questions at the end. But regardless, I'm happy to be here. As Commissioner Winter said before, my name is Erica Brown. I'm with Triangle J Cog and I run all of our housing programs over there. I did see a couple of familiar faces on the call, but for those who don't know, the cog basically is regional support for local governments. We are one of many across the state and we cover seven counties within the Triangle region, including Wake, of course. And basically, we do a lot more than just support housing programs and policies. We also do a lot related to water resources, economic development, transportation. But today, of course, I'm going to be talking a little bit about, you know, what's going on in Raleigh, how we got to this place. And then definitely the impacts of market rate construction on housing affordability and the housing market as a whole. So I will specifically be talking about the housing supply and demand in Raleigh and really what that looks like, what it has looked like over the last decade. Housing affordability, I'm just gonna briefly touch on some key metrics. You know, I know some of us work in this field day in and day out, but for those who don't, just kind of setting the stage about what housing affordability and affordable housing mean, so that we can have, you know, a good discussion afterward. Discuss some of the research around the impacts of market rate construction on the housing market, some key takeaways associated with that. And then I'm just gonna briefly touch on some solutions to preserving affordability in the wake of lots of market rate construction and potentially how that affects affordability or unaffordability. So it's no surprise to all of us that Wake County and the city of Raleigh have seen consistent growth over the last decade. Really, we are seeing both in Wake County as a whole and the city of Raleigh, higher rates of growth per year than the state overall. And really, that essentially means that we're going to continue to see growth. It looks like projected growth up until about 2040 is actually gonna be, you know, an increase of 70% in population within Wake County as a whole. And what that equates to is by 2039, an additional more than 600,000 households or 600,000 people, I apologize. So basically, that means that we need to at least try to keep up with some of that pace in order to make sure that the housing market does not become even further constrained. Where are all these people coming from? So I moved down here about four years ago and I have heard time and time again, you know, about the folks who are coming from out of state, who have more money in their pockets to spend on housing because they're coming from even further constrained housing markets like New York City or places in California. So what I chose to do here is show you both in migration for the city of Raleigh as a whole, but also try to break out where we have folks coming from out of state because that is the story that I hear again and again. And so as you can see here, you know, over basically the last five years, we've seen more than 160 new households that have moved from outside Wake County to Raleigh. And specifically, over the last five years, we've seen about 70,000 households move from out of state. So that is actually only about 14% of the total households that are moving to the city. So, you know, for more than 13,000 households per year is really a lot of folks. And when you consider that that is only 14% of all of the in-migration that we're seeing, that is just astronomical growth. And that is, you know, something that I feel like even if we were able to get a handle on the housing market for the folks who already lived here, that's not including folks who are consistently moving, you know, obviously from out of state, but also just within Wake County to the city of Raleigh. It's not surprising that a lot of folks are moving to this area for jobs, of course, but many are also moving here with jobs already and many of those are high-paying. So when we see an increase in high-wage jobs, we often also see an increase in low-wage jobs because those are the folks that are providing services within the service industry for a growing population overall. And unfortunately, we're seeing not as much wage growth for low-wage paying jobs as we are for high-wage paying jobs. And essentially, this just means that the housing market is just gonna be further bifurcated between these two groups. Really, folks who can't afford the housing prices in this current market and then more and more folks who are becoming housing cost burdened because they just cannot. Breaking it down further, you can see here that approximately 45% of households in Raleigh, both owner and renter, earn less than $50,000 per year. And we're using that as approximately 80%, of area median income. We'll talk a little bit later about specific AMIs and what income targets those are looking at. But for purposes of discussing low-income households, that's kind of the indicator that we're looking at. So basically, 80% of AMI is potentially going to make some households eligible for publicly subsidized housing. That could be public housing or low-income housing tax credit properties. But essentially, we're considering 80% of AMI or less than $50,000 low income. So more than 30% of households, though on the other end, are earning more than $100,000 per year, which you can see here is higher than the proportion for the state overall. This is broken out between tenure. So as you can see here, there is an even starker difference between incomes for renter and owner households. That bifurcation becomes even more clear. And there's more than a third of renters that are actually making less than $35,000. And then more than half of renters are actually considered low income, which, you know, compared to owners, you can see here, 48%, close to half, are of owner households are making more than $100,000 per year. So what that looks like in terms of housing cost burden, which is when a household spends more than 30% of their income on housing costs. Basically, low-income households are higher, have higher rates of cost burden than obviously higher-income households. But this is especially true for low-income renters. The, really, the vast majority of low-income renters are housing cost burdened. Nearly 80% of them are. And then basically, you know, that trend is the same for owners as well. But nominally, you know, there are a lot more low-income renters than there are low-income homeowners. And just to be clear, if it's not already, each of the percentages within each of the income ranges is the proportion of cost burdened households within that income range. So even though, you know, below $20,000, respectively, 90% and 88% of renters and owners are actually cost burdened within that income range, the, you know, renters are, you know, basically four times the actual number of cost burdened households that are within that income range. There's just a lot more low-income renters than there are homeowners. All right, so switching it up a little bit, we're gonna look at some of the dynamics related to housing supply. We've used this slide a lot, so if you've seen this before, it probably looks familiar. But basically, what this is showing is, you know, between 2004 and 2015, a lot of areas in Wake County, specifically Raleigh, saw increases in housing values of more than 40%. And honestly, that trend is just continuing, in some cases, at an even faster rate. And just to put this in perspective, the average housing value in the country increased about 13% during the same time period. So we're really seeing a drastic increase here in the Triangle area, specifically in Raleigh, compared to the state and compared to the United States overall. Since even then, you know, looking at more recent numbers, this is from Redfin. Basically, the median sales price, you know, it's increased almost 70% since 2012. This is more than the sales prices have increased during that same time period. In Cary and in Morrisville, those are, you know, about 50 or 60%. So, but 68% is really drastic and a lot of that even was, is within, you know, the last five years. So it's becoming more and more unaffordable. And this is just median. There are significantly higher sales prices out there than just, you know, $325,000, $350,000. So not just housing cost and increases in prices, but there's also data that indicates that part of the constraint is that there is a lack of housing diversity. So as you can see here, about 40% of all occupied housing units are gonna be single-family detached homeowner occupied houses. And then on the flip side, we also have, you know, apartments that are five or more units. You can see here, there's not really hardly any two-to-four unit housing types. And even, you know, single-family attached, which is kind of surprising to me because I've seen a lot of townhomes in Raleigh. They just don't make up, you know, near as many, as much of the housing stock as, as single-family homes and larger apartments. And that goes for newly permitted units as well. I will say, these numbers looked very low to me, but I did double-check the data. So that being said, though, I mean, you can see the same pattern here is occurring with newly permitted units, where actually we're seeing a lot of permitted units that are those larger apartment buildings. And then the single-family homes are, you know, right after. There's almost no three-to-four units. And I think there's four total two-unit properties that were approved, you know, during this time period. So essentially, this lack of diversity is just further constraining the housing supply. And, you know, always compared to folks who have higher incomes, who have more access to different types of markets, this is just extremely difficult for low-income households who don't really have access to many housing types in the market. But they are just even further constrained, obviously, because of their income. Looking at the difference between the supply and the demand, again, I double-checked these numbers, it seemed really low to me. But the trend here really is that new units are not keeping up with the number of new households that are coming to the market, which is probably not a surprise. We're seeing drastic growth and really the housing market is pretty much staying the same. Or at least, that's what the data is showing us. So high-income households, you know, even in situations where there are not new units coming to the market, they do have the ability to opt to redevelop existing housing. And that can lead to increasing housing values in already existing neighborhoods. I know certainly when I lived in Raleigh, you know, in my neighborhood alone, there were a lot of tear downs of single-family homes and building larger, single-family homes within that area because that was a by right thing to do. And, you know, those homes went for twice as much as the existing houses nearby. So that is something that's happening in the wake of new units not being able to keep up with the folks who are coming into this region. And what that looks like in terms of months of supply on the market is, you can see here, you know, as recent as February, we have about 1.6 months of supply. And what is normally told to us is that six to seven months of supply is where the, the market kind of reaches equilibrium. So we are severely lower than that. And basically, that just means this is a crazy seller's market right now. 1.6 months of supply is just not enough in order to keep up with the demand. And that is in part why we're seeing these higher price points because, you know, people will pay above what that property is worth because there's just not a lot of other options. So moving into affordability, I kind of mentioned some of these pieces before, but just to further flesh it out, obviously, housing affordability is different than affordable housing. So housing affordability applies to everybody. We consider housing to be unaffordable if a household pays more than 30% of their income on both housing, so that's rent or mortgage, and utilities for that. And then because, you know, it's not just housing that necessarily determines how much we spend, but also transportation, which is traditionally the second highest cost for a household, that is directly correlated with housing. So where you live and how much you have to drive are directly correlated. If you live further out, then your transportation cost might be higher and vice versa. So essentially, together, those costs should be no more than 45% to be considered affordable. This calculation was provided by the Housing and Transportation Index. And essentially, that just gives us some more flexibility. I know a lot of R platers, especially in Raleigh, are thinking about, you know, BRT and how that impacts housing affordability and what happens to surrounding property values. And so this just helps keep that in the back of our minds. Affordable housing, on the other hand, traditionally refers to housing that is affordable for low-income populations and sometimes moderate income households. And these, you know, AMI, area median income percentages, those are defined by HUD on a yearly basis for a geographic area. So for the Raleigh MSA, you'll see, you know, 100% of the area median income. In 2020, 2021, either already came out or will be coming out very soon. But that was $94,100 for a family of four at 100% of AMI. And 80% of AMI is really, 80% and below is really what's gonna be considered affordable housing in that it provides housing for low-income households. You'll see here that there are various levels of affordability. So extremely low-income households, those are gonna be 30% of AMI or below. Traditionally, not always, but, you know, public housing is serving these households. But you can also serve these households with other types of mechanisms, you know, low-income housing tax credits, for example. Those go up to 60% of AMI. And what's pretty astronomical here is that even, you know, a household for a family of four, 80% of AMI, technically, what they would be considered low-income at $75,000. And that's just because, you know, the average household is making significantly more than that, which is very different than other parts of the region that we work in and just shows you the extent to which, you know, housing affordability and the housing market is so drastically different here in the Raleigh area than even the Triangle as a whole. So looking at types of affordable housing, kind of what I've been talking about before is more toward the legally binding affordability restricted housing. That's gonna be properties that have basically legally binding affordability restrictions, so they're rent restricted, rent subsidized. And traditionally, that is only for a certain period of time, unless it's public housing, in which case that really is indefinitely. And that is definitely an important part of the affordable housing story. But more importantly, in some cases, is naturally occurring affordable housing, especially when you're talking about the impacts of new construction on the market. Because these are units that are reasonably priced and that they can be affordable to lower-income households, but there is not any sort of protection that's gonna keep them affordable. They're only affordable because of potentially the quality, the size of the unit, where they're located. And as we see more and more interest in, you know, redeveloping already existing neighborhoods, these are the types of properties that we need to keep an eye out for because we could really lose a lot of affordable housing in this way. And like I said before, this is mostly what we're gonna be talking about in terms of how the market affects these types of houses and affordability as compared to, you know, the L-bar housing that I mentioned before. So getting into that, there's definitely a lot of research that surrounds housing prices and new market rate construction, a lot of it even within the last couple of years. I saw, you know, about six articles that talked about different mechanisms by which they measured this in different locations across the country, even across the world. And mostly, we'll talk about the outcomes for all of those research articles was about the same. However, there are two different types of theories that are affecting change when you consider new market rate construction and its effects on affordability in the market. The first is the supply theory. Essentially, that is kind of what we were talking about before, where you increase the housing availability that can relieve pressure on the market and help the housing stock that is existing potentially decrease some of its prices. On the other hand, the demand effect theory is really, essentially, what we've probably heard a lot is that, hey, you're, you're bringing more high-end housing to the area. That's attracting more type, you know, more wealthy types of amenities. Having existing landlords consider raising their rents, you know, AKA gentrification. I hear this a lot more than I actually hear the supply effect theory. But the outcome really is that both of these are happening at the same time. However, we do have the ability to kind of steer the effect to be more related to decreasing prices. However, we, we need to be mindful about what types of developments we're approving, how they're affecting the neighboring communities and so forth. So what is the research saying? As I mentioned before, there is a broad range of rent decreases, you know, showing in all of these different types of studies. That really can be from half a percent all the way up to 12% in one study. So in some cases, very nominal, you know, 12% could be meaningful. But not always are we seeing that consistently across the board. And even though we are seeing a difference in the rental rates, this really depends on the rental class that you're looking at. So high-end residential units are likely to decrease more than low-rent units for a variety of reasons. But important to keep in the back of your mind, because even though rent decreases are helpful because they lead to the market becoming overall slightly more affordable, they're really not enough, especially for those low-rent units. And when you're trying to reach extremely low-income households, you know, that's really gonna have to be done, probably not through the market traditionally. That might be more in terms of, you know, public housing or at least publicly subsidized housing. And then filtering, you know, that theory that the more housing that you can build, households will, higher-income households will move to those units, freeing up those, the houses that they were previously occupying for slightly lower-income households. And while this is happening, when you are building more housing, especially higher-income housing, unfortunately, when you see a lot of in-migration, like we've been seeing within Raleigh and Wake County overall, you know, the rate of new housing being constructed is one, barely keeping up with demand, if at all, and certainly not going to really lead to this filtering effect very quickly, in some cases at all, because we're just not able to keep up with that. And the market really is still constrained because of the new households moving to the, to the market. So we have a couple of key takeaways. It's clear that, you know, new market rate construction can have positive effects on affordability. But that is really only when you keep in mind the context of the neighborhood and also make sure that we're allocating resources to developing, to developing housing that reaches lower income levels. Luckily, in the city of Raleigh, you know, your city council and community has consistently supported that, you know, more and more even recently. So luckily, that is also happening. But there are things that you might want to keep in mind when looking at new proposals, just to make sure that, you know, you are seeing fewer of the negative effects that can happen with new market rate construction. So first and foremost, seems pretty obvious, but making sure that a project, a new development project does not actually result in a net loss of units. If there is a redevelopment project, you know, they might be making the units nicer or improving housing quality. But if they are losing any units because they're making them larger or who knows what, that is obviously further constraining the market. And even if no units are actually lost, we are still potentially creating issues for communities of color or low-income communities that have been there in that neighborhood a while. Because one, we might be exacerbating, you know, changes in the surrounding community in terms of what amenities are there, what community supports are there to support the already existing residents. Certainly, you know, long-time homeowners who need help keeping up with repairs, they are prime targets for folks to come and offer them money to be able to redevelop their home and make a fair amount of money. And when you don't necessarily have money to fix up your home and you're on a fixed income and it's hard to keep up with rising tax values, that seems like a pretty good option. So that's also something that we need to keep in mind. And as I mentioned before, making sure that there is still consistent accessibility for neighborhood amenities. Making sure that projects that provide opportunities do so for a variety of residents. So this comes into play with both actually affordable housing and market rate housing. Luckily, affordable housing, you know, these days is not focusing on concentrating poverty very much. We're really trying to make sure that we are locating affordable housing in areas of opportunity. However, when you're negotiating with developers and thinking about, you know, building new market rate housing in, in an area of opportunity, making sure that there are possibly some units set aside as affordable or that there is some type of concession to make sure that we're not just putting high-income residents next to high-income residents when it's really important to have diversity, to provide opportunity and a variety of other benefits. And then, of course, you all probably do this already a lot, but making sure that there's just a strong collaboration with concerned residents, making sure that they can help influence change and feel like they have definitely some agency over what's happening in their communities. The main takeaway, I think, that I found from this research is that in communities like Raleigh and other places where the housing market, you know, is termed hot, basically, that development is gonna happen whether it needs to be approved by the planning commission or it can be developed by right. And unfortunately, you know, if redevelopment or new development is blocked, there's not necessarily new units coming online, you know, development and where folks can make money on redeveloping property, they will. And if that has to happen in an existing neighborhood where, you know, you might take an existing unit off the market for a low-income household because it's, you know, lower quality or, or doesn't have amenities, redevelop it and make it available for a higher price point, you know, that's even worse in some cases at contributing to gentrification than new unit, creating new units in the market overall, which I thought was definitely surprised me the, when I read it. So moving on, and finally, just kind of wrapping up, these are probably not at all new to any of you, but there are definitely some solutions to preserving affordability, some of which your, you know, housing and community development department is already working on. Certainly, you can harness the housing market by negotiating with developers. Certainly, you can harness the housing market by negotiating with developers. You know, mandatory inclusionary zoning is still not a viable option for us right now. But where you are providing some kind of concession to a developer, you do have the ability to negotiate and in a market like Raleigh. Luckily, you have more wiggle room to negotiate than, you know, places that are in more rural or less, you know, less hot housing markets. You know, because you you do have the market on your side and that, you know, they're making money and they can afford to make some concessions. And neighborhoods that are underdeveloped might have some housing quality issues. You can definitely focus on code enforcement. I would definitely say that this is this is an option, but you do need to make sure that you're partnering with supports to provide repair or rehab for lower income households, especially owner occupied households, but also working with landlords. This is definitely a good neighborhood stabilization tactic. But if you do one without the other, it does risk further exacerbating the issue. Certainly preserving existing publicly subsidized housing. I mentioned before, they have affordability restrictions that will expire. And as those come up for expiration, you risk losing, you know, units that can provide house housing for extremely low income or low income households. And that is extremely important. And I know, you know, the city is interested in preserving affordability there as well. Tax relief and assistance for low income homeowners who, you know, might be on fixed incomes, but where, you know, affordability is only possible where property values, you know, are rising, but they might not be able to consistently afford those taxes. That is definitely something that I've seen other communities within the triangle focus on as a long term, you know, neighborhood stabilization strategy. And then in addition to just supporting the market, also trying to support low income or moderate income households in accessing the market. Some folks may be able to afford the monthly mortgage payment, but might not have access to a chunk of money for down payment. So down payment assistance, counseling, also supporting, you know, a co op or a community land trust or all options to provide more, you know, long term asset building strategies for lower income households as well. And if you want to take a look at any of these later, I provided sources, but I'll go ahead and stop for now. I'll stop sharing so we can see each other. But if you need me to re-reference any of the slides, I'd be happy to do so.
Okay, thank you, Erica. Are there any questions, comments? Yes, Jennifer, I'm sorry, Commissioner Lamont.
Erica, always good to see you. And that was a fantastic presentation. Do you want to talk about how some of the surrounding communities are also affected by Raleigh's growth?
Yeah, I mean, absolutely. We talk about this a lot because unfortunately, fortunately and unfortunately, our communities are very focused on their own community. And so, you know, Raleigh and Durham and Chapel Hill, they're all doing things for their own communities. But, you know, because those are very expensive areas, they unfortunately were not able to provide enough affordable housing for everybody who needs it. And that is why folks will go to folk lower income households who can't afford a unit in Raleigh will go elsewhere. And then they, as I mentioned before, housing and transportation are directly correlated. And they will be commuting, you know, outside of where they're living to be able to get to their job and some of those high job, you know, density areas like downtown Raleigh, downtown Durham, even Chapel Hill with the university. So that's happening a lot. And even though they might be able to find slightly decreased housing prices, they're actually in the same situation because they're having to pay a lot for transportation and not just the cost, but also the cost of time. And time is money and that is also really difficult. So that's part of why, you know, pre pandemic, there were so many folks commuting on 40. Most people don't live and work in the same community. Part part of that is because we're a very inter interrelated and integrated community in the triangle, but also because of that price point challenge. So that's a little bit of what's going on.
Commissioner Lamont?
Yeah, I just have a follow up. I asked that question because it has such an impact, as you mentioned, like traffic and we're losing residents here in Raleigh. And so how can we, you know, kind of keep all of that centralized within our community? One question I often have regarding inclusionary zoning. I believe it's a bit of a gray area in the state legislation about the requirements of that, because I think Chapel Hill has broken some boundaries on providing inclusionary housing on single family homes. How might that be something that we can look at in Raleigh?
Oh, sorry, I thought I was still muted. So yeah, I think that is something that is possible. I will say, you know, the inclusionary zoning policy that they have in Chapel Hill has seen minimal benefits so far. And I think that they would be the first people to say that. You know, it is, there are, I think, other ways that you might be able to get support, you know, support for affordable housing outside of inclusionary zoning. I do think that it's always worth trying to negotiate with a developer. And I do, from what I have read, to be fair, I did not go to planning school in the state of North Carolina, so compared to some other folks, I might know less. But from what I've read, it is definitely possible if you are providing some kind of concession. It does have to be outlined in a development agreement, like a negotiation. Right now, you know, they do have, what I have heard, and I'm open to having other people share what they have heard, but from the Chapel Hill folks is that basically it's more, they have a sort of guideline. I don't know that they actually get the percentage of affordable units or, you know, payment and lieu that they would like that is set out in their policy. But it's definitely something that they have, and then it's basically still a negotiation. But I haven't heard that it's been astronomically beneficial. But I know Bynum's on the call, Ira, Larry, anybody who's who's heard something else, please contribute.
Commissioner Bennett?
Thank you, Chair Winters. And thank you, Erica. I appreciate it. Presentation, it was really helpful. I'm I'm interested in, I guess, what we as a planning commission, what types of conditions could we legally, maybe this is a question for David, require or try to negotiate with the developer with the limitations we have on inclusionary zoning? What what can we realistically do?
Well, first of all, you caught the main thing. We can't require any of it. The I know the city attorney before I joined, the city attorney's office had worked up some sample zoning conditions. I see Bottom shaking her head. She may have more specifics because I quite frankly don't have all the specifics of those. But as I recall, and Bottom, please jump in, it created a matrix of sorts that dealt with how affordable it was, how many units would be restricted to that affordability, you know, what percentage of units and for what time period, how long would the units be restricted to a certain income? But and I think it was a sliding scale. If you went up on one, you went down on the other, but Bottom, is that anywhere near accurate?
That's exactly right. Larry Jarvis on the call worked closely with the attorney's office and also with planning to come up with that template, if you will, and we have seen it used in, I think, one or two cases. But I think, David, your initial point, which is that it can't be required. It has to be voluntarily offered by the applicant is really at the at the heart of it. And frankly, once I've bought the property and made the investment in the land, my room for negotiation about providing affordable units is really going to be very limited, right? Once that big expense of the land is established as kind of a foundational stone in the development deal, there's just not a lot of room for a developer. And I think that's part of why we all feel like having the authority to leverage inclusionary zoning is so important because it makes a clear message to developers before they buy land, what the expectation of the community is. And I will just go back to the example of Chapel Hill. My understanding is that our city attorney's office does not think that what Chapel Hill is doing is something that Raleigh can do successfully without litigation or legislative response. So while it's it's great that they do that, the results have been pretty limited. But I I don't think that that's really a viable option for Raleigh.
Agreed. And it was nine units over some long period of time. And most of that was through a payment and lieu as opposed to actually creating units.
Okay. Yes, Ms. Brown.
I was just going to quickly mention that, yes, the payment and lieu is by far the option that is taken instead of providing affordability on site. But I had heard that rather than necessarily the inclusionary policy that they have had better luck with a density bonus. However, I think that is not the case with the city of Durham. So, you know, I think it's just, it's interesting, definitely Chapel Hill is more constrained in land. And so I think that's part of why that is the case. So you might not have the same type of success. You might be more aligned with what's happening in Durham. So just a note about that.
Yes, Mr. Ira.
Hi. It was my plan to not really talk during this meeting, but like Erica, a lot of my experience comes from other states outside of North Carolina. And in particular, before before I moved here and started working for the city, I I did work a lot in housing in Pennsylvania where it was legal. And in fact, helped a town refine their mandatory inclusionary zoning code. So what I'll say is number one, it's it's still, it's still about the numbers. So we were helping them tweak tweak the numbers. So it's like, how many? What percentage and at what level and whatever? That's still really hard to do. Especially theoretically, like for anyone who's looking to use the city Raleigh template to get those numbers right. Even when it's mandatory and you have more examples of how it works, it's still really hard to get those numbers right. And get it to work the way you want it to. The second thing I'll say is, you know, even in those places where it is legal and people have it. You know, my my personal opinion from what I've seen working in housing policy all over the country is that no one single thing is ever the answer. So even those places that had mandatory inclusionary zoning, it was also important that they do all the other stuff that Raleigh is doing. And which is like subsidizing things, you know, requiring other stuff. And so and offering incentives still. So while I think it would be nice if the state let us do mandatory inclusionary, have some policy in some form, just because it would give us the option to have it. We don't. And so all the other stuff doesn't go away and doesn't become less important because the places that did have mandatory inclusionary zoning, that that didn't solve their issues either. Now, granted, Pennsylvania is very different, as Erica was explaining. Declining population statewide year after year after year. So the whole dynamics she was talking about about filtering and new construction work was completely different. But I just wanted to throw that out there that you know, there are examples from other places and it's hard to do and it's still, you know, just one one piece of what everything you have to do.
Good. Thank you. Jennifer, I'm sorry, Commissioner Lamont, one question, just one moment. Larry, did you have a presentation or something that you wanted to share with us? I'm just looking at the time and realizing I wanted to acknowledge you and your efforts if you wanted to share something.
I don't have a presentation, but I did want to address some of the common misconceptions. So when we talk about the creation of affordable housing, affordable rental housing, we are talking about doing that through the low income housing tax credit program. That whole development process and the way it is financed, the motivations for the developer is completely different than conventional apartment development. So I wanted to talk about how conventional apartment development works because it is, it's an industry, it works a certain way. And when people talk about wanting a different outcome, what they're really saying is that we want the the process to be different. Well, you cannot ask for a different process. So this is how conventional apartment development works. So you have the developer. So the developer is going to buy the land, they're going to get the entitlement if they don't have it already. Then they are going to build it and they're going to get it leased and then they're going to sell it. So they are going to sell it typically to a fund, equity fund, a fund that is supported by investors, but that is their motivation. When they sell property to that fund, that's where they make their profit. So the motivation for the fund to buy the property is that what they are buying is the cash flows. So they want the income from that property for some period of time because they have the individual investors like you and me who have invested in this fund or through the stock market. But what they're buying are those cash flows. And again, that is completely different than how the low income housing tax credit process works. So we talk about wanting to include affordable rental units in what would otherwise be a conventional apartment, market rate apartment complex. And where you've thrown a wrench into the works is if you if the developer is going to sell that property as soon as it's leased and you have the cash flows and the profits in place, what does that affordable rental do to that profit motivation? And then how is that monitored and enforced long term? So it's, there's a lot of well meaning people who are trying to take pieces of how we create rental units by subsidizing them and mixing that in with how market rate rental development is done. And they really don't mix. So I was here to kind of talk more if there are questions about, again, the market conditions that we're dealing with, and we have a shortage of housing units across the board and how it's important to be hitting on all cylinders to make sure that we're maximizing our affordable rental production, but at the same time, making sure that we are maximizing just the creation of units across the board. Because, you know, although, you know, Erica talked about, you know, the filtering process and others, you know, not having a tremendous impact, you know, in highly constrained markets. The flip side is that in the absence of having added to that supply, you're only going to have made the affordability issues worse. So, but again, housing is my background. In addition to having majored in housing when I got my planning, I also have an MBA from Carolina, know a lot about housing economics, so I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Larry. Jennifer, I'm sorry, Commissioner Lamont, I saw your hand.
Yeah, and Larry, thank you, because that was that was relevant to some of the thoughts that I had as well. I know that even so, by me being in the low income housing tax credit program, you know, you, on the conventional side, yes, you do have the investor rate of return target requirements, which puts a constraint. And then when you have land values increasing, labor increasing, cost of materials increasing, that puts a lot of pressure on the expense side and the development side, which then, you know, an investor still has a rate of return requirement on top of that. So then when you look at rents, there's a lot of pressure to on the investment side and on the economic side to keep those rents higher. You know, some of my background in Denver too is, you know, a lot of those class A, class B apartment developers were told not to decrease their rents in a period of time where they were seeing about 10% vacancy rates. So there that is a big pressure from the investment side to keep that those those rents high. And then to Ira's point about there's not just one solution, I would like to also offer, you know, just a And then to Ira's point about there's not just one solution, I would like to off, also offer, you know, just a complimentary piece to the housing affordability bond, the housing affordable bond by providing five different buckets of investment type. I think that that was really helpful to create a diverse support for housing. Larry, I don't know if you want to comment on anything that was done and thought of the bond.
Again, just to reiterate what I have often done, that primary policy objective was with the bond was the whole objective of equitable development around transit and making sure that as we make those transit investments, there are opportunities for low to moderate income households, whether they're existing or whether they are folks who would move near those transit investments to reduce their combined housing and transportation costs. But there, there are, equity is a consideration. So you look across the five buckets and what the backend policy objective was. It's very much about the whole equity conversation that we are having more broadly right now.
Okay, any other comments? Okay, well, I will add a few of my own. I would be interested in seeing Ms. Brown, the, the 2020 HUD limits for Raleigh. And it'd be also interesting if you have that comparison with the triangle since you're saying we are growing that far, far quickly than the other areas. That's one, two, I also want, would like to delve into, I don't know if you all have the answer right now, but something I would definitely like to look into for talking about the constraints that the general assembly has given regarding planning is what the city of Charlotte was able to do with inclusionary zoning. Because they've done something, I wasn't able to get well versed in it, but I just remember seeing it thinking, I didn't think that's something we could do with how, whatever workaround they came with for, for this effort, considering they are a major metropolitan area and we are growing into one as well. It would be interesting to see what they're doing and how we can apply it here. Also, it's very interesting, now I will be the first to admit, I do not have an MBA in anything but Raleigh. And it's just interesting to me that when we talk about the filtering process, that sounds a lot like the trickle down economics of the eighties and we see how well that's worked. So it's very interesting that that is a thought, a mindset in 2021 as we're relating to housing going forward. That was just very interesting to me. Also, it sounds as though, Ms. Brown, you were also discussing the importance of mixed income housing as well as development going forward. And the interesting thing for me about that is that the way we start is more so the services and the quality of the product. And I'm wondering how feasible that is and how we can make it even more attractive to do for developers in this area. Do you have, is the, can you answer or respond to that, Ms. Brown?
So one thing I will say is I will follow up related to the income limits versus the triangle. I have them pulled for all the different areas, but not in one thing, so I will follow up to share that with you all. Related to the filtering piece, I do think, you know, I, I also understand and, and relate it to that trickle down economics. And, you know, I think filtering in theory does definitely play a part. I also, I mean, it would be not fair to say that filtering will, one, solve the housing issue and two, serve the lowest income households. You know, they need something different and they need a lot more than what the market is going to provide them. Even, you know, with trying to, to support mixed income housing, you know, as both Larry and Jennifer were saying, you know, the, the market is expensive to build in anyway. And even if you're doing mixed income, it's likely not going to be market rate and even 50% of AMI, 60% of AMI. That's why we have alternative solutions like low income housing tax credits. That being said, I have two ideas, you know, related to the mixed income housing and whether it's feasible, things I've seen in other places. One, I know, you know, it's not drastically different types of levels of income, but luckily now we do have the ability to do income averaging and low income housing tax credit projects. You know, that means you can serve not just 60% of AMI, you can serve extremely low income households all the way up, I think, to 80%. And that does allow for some flexibility and also, you know, tax credit projects are not to be cited in areas of concentrated property. And so that does allow for mixed income communities, even if it's not a lot of range of mixed income within one property. So there's that. The other thing that I wanted to ask and kind of mention that I've seen work in other places like Durham or hopefully work, I think it's in the process right now. But is the concept of the rental demonstration program with public housing and the ability of public housing authorities to be able to essentially make that basically redevelop a public housing property and make some of the, the units market rate. And so that essentially is mixing actual public income, I mean, public housing with market rate housing that's happening in Durham as part of their downtown redevelopment program with the Durham Housing Authority. And that is possible because Durham Housing Authority has really well cited properties and they own a lot of assets that are near downtown that is very attractive to a lot of higher income households right now. So there is that ability and that actually is going to happen. I wonder to what extent that is happening in Raleigh. You know, where, where there is ability to do that, given where existing assets are located. And I'll leave it at that, I probably have a lot more to say, but I want to open it up to other people. Thank you.
Anyone? This is, I'm sorry, see Commissioner Bennett's hand.
Ken can go ahead because maybe he'll answer something or give me another question.
No, I just wanted to clarify something about the notion of filtering. I've often heard it compared to trickle down economics, but as a child of the Reagan administration, that's how old I am. The trickle down economics was the theory that if you cut top marginal tax rates, that wealthy people would create more jobs and that would create benefits throughout the economy. Has nothing to do with whether or not housing units as they age become more affordable. And filtering was a thing that used to be very visible in Raleigh. I once lived in Boylan Heights in the nineties before I went off to planning school. And I rented an entire three bedroom bungalow for $450 a month, a house that was built for a middle class family. So that unit had, had filtered down in the market to be very cheap. I, I split it with two other people who were sort of in between college and graduate school and paid $150 a month in rent. This was in 1994 and five. That same house now is worth probably about a half million dollars. It is filtered up through the market because for whatever reason, back in the nineties, people with money didn't want to live in Boylan Heights and now they do. And so that house has been bought up by a series of owners and improved and, and filtering can happen in both directions. And we've seen it happen that neighborhoods that are, that ring downtown in the eighties and nineties, you could get really, really cheap rentals and dilapidated old houses there. And, and most of that affordable, naturally occurring affordable stock is gone. And that's exactly what's starting to happen and, or is an advanced state of happening in the neighborhoods in East Raleigh. But filtering as a concept is, is pretty obvious. You go to any city in America and you will find homes that were built for an upper class population have filtered down through the marketplace. Brownstone, Brooklyn even, which was built for a single family houses are typically now four apartments. A garden apartment and then east floor above that is its own individual apartment. Now the dynamics of the New York City housing market are such that those apartments are now incredibly valued. But there was a time when those single family houses were busted up into multiple apartments. It was because they had filtered down in the marketplace. So I think I completely agree with Erica that given the dynamics of our housing market today and the fact that the bulk of our housing stock, well over two thirds of it is, is only about 40 years old. There's not a lot of old housing stock out there and because the neighborhoods where the older housing stock is have reversed themselves and become so desirable, we're probably seeing more upward filtering right now than we are downward filtering. But there are still places even in Raleigh where you find older ranches and split levels are providing some affordable ownership opportunities because the neighborhood has just aged. And it's not as competitive with the newer stuff. So I just wanted to just weigh in a little bit on the topic of filtering.
Well, thank you, thank you, I appreciate that. And I was looking at it from the definition that was given in terms of if more housing was available, more, I don't want it necessarily to say expensive, but other options were available, then the more affluent would move out, leaving resources available for guests that are less affluent. That was the definition that was given.
I think that is, that is part of the sort of classic model of how filtering works. And of course, one of the other things people say is, well, it takes 40 years for the housing to trickle down. Which is true, but the other, the other situation is that if you're not keeping up with market rate production, then the high income buyers don't disappear, they're still out there looking for housing. And what they're doing is they're outbidding lower income households for the existing older stock and then fixing it up or demolishing it and replacing it as we're seeing happen in a lot of the most desirable neighborhoods in Raleigh. And so, you know, while it is true that a, a unit, a new build unit will not, you know, even if it does filter down to a lower income rental unit, it will take decades for that to happen. The new build unit does sop up some of that demand from the high income households, takes them out of the market for the existing units. And therefore helps ameliorate some of the price pressures that are happening on those existing units. That's why, you know, I think the, the takeaway here is that, you know, a market well supplied from housing plus a robust suite of public policies to help preserve and build new affordable housing is kind of what is needed to really attack the problem.
Would you agree that when we're talking about in attacking the problem, that also the need for subsidized housing is also necessary? Because in the equations that I'm hearing is affordable and affordable is looking at the 60% AMI. And that's just considered with the mixed use when we have a broad chasm of, 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 of incomes in Raleigh and need.
Absolutely, because, for a couple of reasons. First of all, it's economically infeasible to do new build units for 60% of AMI or lower. The, the rent doesn't even support the debt on the construction, much less any money for the developer to be in that business. So subsidy is absolutely necessary. The other thing is when you get down to very low income households, the private market is going to serve those folks with very substandard housing. Housing that's got real problems with it, it may be very poorly insulated, it may have bad plumbing. It may not have, probably no AC in the summer. There was a time in Raleigh where there were rental houses with no heat. That was legal under our housing code in the nineties. And I remember reading about it a lot in the local newspapers at the time. So the, you know, if you want to serve very low income households with decent, safe housing, it has to be done with public subsidy. Because the private market simply cannot provide a decent, safe unit for that level of rent.
Okay, any other comments? Commissioner Bennett.
Thank you, I see the time, so I'll be brief. So now I have a planning degree and an economics degree and a passion for housing and equity. So I could be on this all day long, but I'm going to restrict my comments to my role as a planning commissioner. And as a planning commissioner, I feel frustrated. I feel like I'm between a rock and a hard place. Because on the one hand, we see these rezonings come in and we know, or we at least suspect the impact it's going to have on the neighborhood. But on the other hand, we also hear that we need to keep the market well supplied with housing. And I believe Erica, you said we only have like 1.6 months supply. So you're hearing, okay, well, we need to keep adding housing, we need to keep adding housing, but we don't have the authority to add anything to ensure that you know, we're, we're looking out for some affordability. Developer, developers aren't just going to offer it. So, and then if we do try to negotiate and get something in, then the developer may just renegotiate with counsel and get it taken out. So as a planning commissioner, I just feel like I don't know what we can do. I mean, I can keep making great speeches about how frustrated I am every time something comes, but I don't know as a planning commissioner how we can really have an impact on this problem. It seems like there's a lot of stuff that needs to happen outside of the planning commission. So I guess I just need guidance on what should we do, what should we be looking for? I mean, it seems like we're shooting ourselves in the foot to deny rezonings because we need to add the housing. So what do we do?
When you're saying to, and denying the housing, but also that we are perpetuating the existing problem when we approve it. So it's like we, forgive me for just jumping in, Commissioner Bennett. But it's, it's like we are a part of the problem in, in the midst of this process and trying to find a solution.
Right. Right, and one other thing, and then Ken, I see you like opening your mouth, so I know you could. But one more thing for you to respond to, I think something else that we need to make clear, maybe to the public, because I see this a lot, is we can't require the affordable housing set aside. Because we get a lot of emails and a lot of comments, well, you know, add a condition, making the developer set aside affordable housing, why didn't you do this? We can't. So I don't think that's always clear to, to the general public. We would if we could, but we, we don't have that authority.
So, so I don't, I don't have a perfect answer for you. Because as, as I think you've, you've correctly assessed, the tools that the planning commission has to, to make a big difference in this space are, are very limited to non, nonexistent. So, you know, you, you still are reviewing rezoning matters and determining whether or not you believe that there is a public benefit to changing the zoning from what it currently is. And, you know, sometimes the question is simply, should there be more units on the site or not? And you can evaluate that based on what you think, you know, based, armed with some of the information here as well as your own expertise as to whether or not that is going to be beneficial to the, to the, the area where it's going to be located or not. As well as I think that larger consideration, which is, how does, how does this impact the supply and demand in the, in the larger citywide and regional market, which is also important because, you know, trends in Raleigh are not isolated from the trends of the larger region and vice versa. I think that, you know, when a, when, when redevelopment is occurring of, and this is what I think a very frustrating thing that we need to do more exploration on. When redevelopment is occurring, it's going to take some affordable units that exist today out of the market. What is reasonable to expect the developer in terms of dealing with the potential display, direct displacement that would occur through the redevelopment? And I think that's a very relevant question to at least be discussing during part of the rezoning, because the rezoning is setting up the additional density that makes the redevelopment and the displacement of the existing tenants viable. Denying the rezoning doesn't necessarily save the existing tenants. You, there's other options, they could simply keep the existing units and up, you know, put in new granite countertops and raise the rent. They could do, there are other things that could be done beyond the rezoning. But I think it's certainly something, a relevant impact for us to look at is whether or not we're losing some older, more affordable units through a rezoning that is targeting, say, some existing multifamily. And I think, you know, the third thing is, as Erica noted, you're also looking at, at, you are looking at those localized neighborhood impacts. And whether the rezoning is, is you think going to have a transformative impact on the immediate market or is going to, or is simply going to provide housing opportunities that are maybe going to help ameliorate some of the impact on the immediate market. So say someone comes in with a large industrial site in, on the edge of South Park and they want to do some market rate housing. And we just saw this with the, with the rezoning that was on the old Trailways Bus Barn there between Person and Blunt Streets, south of, I think it was between Hoek and Bragg. You know, nothing on the site today, no direct displacement, they're building some ownership housing. They're building some ownership housing, but the ownership housing they're building was stacked townhouses. And they were, I think upfront as to what those would sell for. They probably sell for a little less than the single family that's in the neighborhood today, but they sell for a healthy price. So I think you have to ask yourself a question. Is that taking buyers who might otherwise be buying an older property in South Park and renovating it or building new and, and putting them in a new unit that's not displacing anyone and not impacting existing units? Is that good or bad? And I think, you know, you got to weigh some of those considerations as well. It's a very complex issue and because it's complex, what the right answer is on a site by site basis may not always be obvious. But we're hoping this provides at least a framework for having the discussion. And I certainly understand your frustration and not having a stronger toolset to deal with the impacts of what's going on. I think we all had a much easier job in a way when the, when the city's growth was primarily on undeveloped land at the urban fringe. And we were mainly arguing about design standards for subdivisions and strip malls. But we're in a different world now. We're in a world where a significant share of the, of the growth of the city is happening by tearing down old stuff and building new stuff in our already developed locations. And it's, it's a much more complex problem. And there's no easy answers to what the all the right answer is, but I think we have to weigh and take a broad look at what, not only what is the impact of this decision that's in front of us, but how, you know, what is the cumulative impact of making similar decisions over time?
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we, this is, as we like to say, a robust conversation, as we say a lot. We are getting on 50, we're, we're, we're over our time. So there is someone from the public who would like to speak. Can we, for a show of hands, is it okay to give maybe five minutes for the comment? Okay, thank you. We have Mr. Jim Anthony. Karma, can you please unmute Mr. Anthony?
She's already done it. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
So I'd like to speak as a developer who's got a heart for affordable housing, housing that is affordable, who wants to try to address some of the ideas that might actually help get product done by the for-profit community. Obviously, the nonprofit community has its own things that it's going to do and we're supportive of those. And one of the things that I think can be helpful is, is asking for voluntary contributions to a permanent nonprofit affordable housing or a fund that the city sets up. I have done that in Durham. But the, the problem is the economics, right? It's always the economics of, of projects that are being done by folks like us who have to be sustainable. And, and so there's some things that the city can actually do to help encourage that. And one of those things that Durham has on its books is an affordable housing density bonus, which I believe is being worked on for Raleigh as well. But I think it needs to be more than just the ability to build more units. I think we've got to look at things like setbacks, you know, enhanced density capabilities for those sites that incorporate affordable units. And perhaps some assistance with rebates on those units, on fee rebates, everything from the connection fees, that what used to be called impact fees, all the way through permitting fees for those units that are designated as permanently affordable units. So create some financial incentives on the cost side. And then we have to be honest that a property built for sale that's affordable is very hard to administer for the city. It's much less difficult to do this for rental product. And so I think the energy needs to be focused primarily on, on creating incentives for developers to build affordable rental housing that is permanent within their projects. And so I actually have a lot of different ideas that I'd like to share with you in a, perhaps another format, or perhaps I could just send it to you, Shelley. And I've written some of this up and we could, you know, bat these around together and begin to build some things perhaps into your planning commission process that could flow into the planning department and perhaps even the code. So that's some thoughts.
Okay, well, thank you. I heard some feedback. Well, thank you so much for sharing that. I look forward to getting your information. I'll make sure that you get my email address as well as the other commissioners. And I'm sure that others on the call will be looking forward to reading what you have to share. Is there anything else? Because again, we are past time. I'm sorry. Yes, Mr. York.
Just real quickly, you had mentioned the Charlotte program for inclusion zoning. That's a voluntary mixed income program, which does similar to what Mr. Anthony was referring to. There's density bonuses and some other development requirement relief setbacks and so forth across the spectrum of residential zoning districts. And so, but it's strictly, it's, it's not mandatory. It's a voluntary. And depending on your location, you're more eligible than not to participate in that. And your density can go up if you're closer to transit and things of that nature. So it's a, but it's, it's an incentive based. It's similar to what the city's going to attempt with the transit overlays. And so, I mean, they're building in affordability through an incentive based method with the transit overlays. And so I'm not the best person to speak on that, but Ken could probably share more on that. But there is, we are working that way towards incentivizing voluntary affordable units in developments.
Thank you. Thank you. Is, are there any other comments? Commissioner Altman?
I know we're at time. Just one kind of thought is, you know, Shelley, you've done a really great job of kind of formatting the strategic planning committee to dive into a lot of these really tough issues. Is there an opportunity, this might be more for staff too, I don't know, or our collective. Is there an opportunity where we can take all of this information that we're learning collectively and provide some sort of recommendation or, you know, and maybe that's to planning staff or maybe it's to council, you know, since we're doing so much work here and we're learning a lot on how, you know, we can start to make a difference in housing across the city.
Okay. All right. Thank you for sharing that. And I'm sorry, just had a note pop up. Okay, thank you for sharing that. And I'm sure that we'll be having conversations like this going forward. I want to, again, thank you, Ms. Brown, Larry Jarvis and Mr. Anthony for coming and sharing your information with us and sharing your perspective. I found it most enlightening and you've given me a lot of food for thought moving forward. Ms. Brown, before I let you go, can you also send us a copy of your presentation specifically with those, those, those ones I wanted? I can't think of the word I want.
The, for the state, yeah, I'm happy to do that. And I will follow up, I guess, with Ira to do that.
Okay. All right. All right, everyone. Again, thank you so much. I'm going to conclude the meeting today. Again, it was a great conversation and I will see my fellow commissioners and planning staff on Thursday. Thank you so much for coming.